I've been on. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Equality Policy Certification Subcommittee. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflicts or appearance of conflict with respect of any matter coming before the committee today, please identify yourself. Hearing none, I will ask Chris McClure to please call roll.
Chair Patel?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Codis?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd? Mr. Chairman, you have form.
Thank you very much. Our first item of business is to discuss the Board of Governors Directive on the policy on equality within the University of North Carolina and to hear a briefing from Chancellor Roberts on the university's implementation of the policy. Chancellor Roberts?
Thank you, Trustee Patel. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Just as a brief summary of the equality policy history, it was adopted on May 23rd, 2024, a rescinded policy on diversity and inclusion within the University of North Carolina. Significant provisions include the following. The university must treat all people as individuals of dignity and inclusion and continue to ensure that diverse persons of any background from North Carolina and beyond are invited, included, and treated equally. Diversity means the ways in which individuals vary, including but not limited to backgrounds, beliefs, viewpoints, abilities, cultures, and traditions that distinguish one individual from another. Nondiscrimination based on protected characteristics and employment practices and provision of educational programs and activities. Commitment to institutional neutrality and emphasis on student success and employee well-being. The Provost's Office was charged with responsibility for implementing the policy. They had fourteen individual meetings with unit and school leaders to consider changes to be made to ensure compliance. Twenty follow-up meetings were held to work carefully through the details of the policy and the changes that are being made. This is a general overview of what we did for 2024 and the guiding principles. All these are documented in the 2024 certification. With respect to personnel adjustments, we eliminated twenty positions that were filled. We eliminated an additional forty-one vacant positions this past academic year. We realigned twenty-seven positions to perform policy compliant work. Most schools focused on programming and services for student success and faculty and staff development. With respect to programmatic changes, we closed the Central DEI Office. We eliminated DEI offices, programs, and committees in all schools and divisions. We reviewed trainings, programs, and strategic plans for compliance and realignment. And we reoriented programs and redirected funds towards student success and employee well-being. The redirected savings from these personnel and programmatic changes were five million three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Most funds went to realign positions, student success programs, and addressing the strategic needs of the individual units. In the following presentation and in the draft 2025 certification, you may hear and see certain terms. Inclusion. When we use the term inclusion, we mean creating an environment that is supportive of students and employees' success, ensuring a free and open exchange of thoughts and ideas regardless of background, identity, or viewpoint. It means ensuring that all programs and opportunities are accessible to everyone and that everyone is treated as an individual and not a member of a specific identity or group. Support and well-being. Support and well-being means ensuring that qualified students and employees of all backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported in their pursuit of a degree and/or career goals. Programming or services with this descriptor are designed to have a positive effect on the academic performance, retention, or graduation of all students and employees, provided that programming complies with the requirements of the equality policy, including institutional neutrality. Community building refers to efforts to build relationships and connections among the school, department, or unit, community. My turn over to Paul Newton for further detail.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thanks to the board for taking the time to be with us and help us with this certification. The reason we took time to define those terms is because as we prepared this for you, those struck us as terms that could be concerning, that they might be masking non-compliance activity. So the terms as defined by the Chancellor are compliant with the equality policy. And you will hear from the presenters that we have done our best to this point of ensuring that folks that are using those terms, and you'll see them in some of the new job descriptions, that we just don't want you to be concerned. Those are consistent with the equality policy, both in terminology and in effect. So I am gonna now, just a moment, there's one other item I want to touch on, but I'm going to turn this over to Kirsten Stevenson of the Office of University Counsel and Leah Cox, Vice Provost, who will speak about how the campus implemented the equality policy. And Katie Nolan, Office of University Counsel, who will speak about the process for assembling this year's certification. So one other thing I wanted to touch on that may have rung a bell with this board is the notion of redirected savings. Some of you are no doubt going to recall that we had submitted a budget to the Central Office, to the System Office, and the board voted to have those redirected savings go to campus safety. We offered that up to the System Office, but they chose to stay with the original budget. And we are duty-bound to follow the System Office's directive on that. So that's why you don't see campus safety in there at this point. So with that, I am now going to turn it over to the subject matter experts, Leah Cox and Kirsten Stevenson.
Morning, trustees. I want to offer to you an overview regarding last year, what we did, the training and the certification, and just kind of walk you through very briefly what took place. So in 2024, Provost Clemens met with every dean and other unit leaders, fourteen meetings in total, to introduce the topic and to work through initial strategies for compliance. The provost also requested each dean to provide a plan for compliance that they would present to him and to both Kirsten and I. Every dean was also instructed that they must meet with Kirsten and I to review their plan. We met with every school and other significant units, so twenty meetings in all, to discuss the policy requirements, how it would be implemented in their environment, and where they were particularly difficult questions that they may be faced with. Typically, the meetings would involve the dean or vice provost or vice chancellor, a chief HR officer, and one or more members of the school's unit or leadership team. Many of the units requested follow-up conversations from Kirsten and I as they worked through all of the changes that were required. All schools and units were asked to carefully consider their programs and practices in light of the requirements of the policy. And then lastly, we emphasized the need to ensure that the programs and personnel were in compliance and that both internal and external-facing materials accurately reflected what the program was doing. Specific changes that worked across the central administration, so the Central DEI Office eliminated seven positions all full-time, and we closed the DEI Office. DEI training such as bias and microaggressions were discontinued. Project Uplift and Uplift Plus were moved to the Office of the Carolina Higher Ed Education Opportunity Programs, better known as CHIO. The Women's Center returned to its original reporting structure, was to centers and institutes. The Odom Institute for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Research Certificate for Faculty and Staff was discontinued. Nutrition Research Institute reviewed the criteria for its Academic Accelerator Fund to make all faculty eligible. Any centers with DEI committees or work groups confirmed that they were discontinued or transitioned to other work. And campus centers revisited their programs and materials to ensure policy compliance. This work has continued to go on since 2024. Now I'm going to pass this over to Kirsten.
Good morning. We had a lot of specific changes in specific schools and work units across campus. All of them are included in the 2024 certification, but I'll go through them for this group so that you can have them in front of the top of mind as we're talking about what we did for 2025. School of Medicine, you'll notice, had one of the most significant financial adjustments, realignments over the course of the realignment in 2024. They eliminated six positions, which was a combination of full-time and secondary appointments. Those were the Vice Dean for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion among them. They also closed their Office of Inclusive Excellence and Community Engagement, the Office of Rural Initiatives, and the Office of Scholastic Enrichment and Activity. The College of Arts and Sciences also undertook a very significant change from years earlier. And first, the Senior Associate Dean for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion had her position redone, completely realigned. She became the Senior Associate Dean for Faculty and Staff Development. And again, as we've heard in other comments, that was a significant position and activity shift and not simply a shift in title. Her new responsibilities included creating and supporting professional and leadership development for all faculty and staff within the college, strengthening professional and scholarly communities among faculty and staff, and supporting best practices for faculty and staff retention and recruitment. The other significant undertaking by the college was the elimination of its Diversity Liaison Program. Those were secondary appointments taught by faculty in each of the departments within the college. Over the course of kind of the latter six months of 2024, they sunset that program. The stipends went away. The responsibilities that were being performed by the diversity liaisons for each of those departments went away. Next, I'd like to, oh, one more thing for the college. They also had a strategic plan for DEI that has been in progress for a number of years. All the action steps for equity and that portion of the strategic plan was eliminated entirely. And next, I'd like to talk about Gillings. The Gillings had what they had called the Inclusive Excellence Action Plan. It has been initiated in 2019. That program was ended. There were similarly inclusive excellence committees within departments within Gillings, and those were all refocused to work on matters including student success, organizational success, and community well-being. There was also an Alumni Inclusive Excellence Committee. That committee was reconstituted to align with the new strategic plan for Gillings. Next, I'll talk about Hussman. Hussman School of Journalism had recently created what is called the Abide Committee. Within, I think, maybe a year before we were having these conversations with Hussman in 2024. The Abide Committee initially, the initials, the D and E stood for diversity and was it equality? Equity? What was it? I don't even remember anymore because now it stands. They did keep the acronym abide. And they shifted the D and E acronyms for dignity and excellence. But this wasn't just a name shift. We had a lot of conversations with them about why they felt strongly about keeping that abide acronym to be used, but and how they could do that and not lose the momentum that the committee was moving forward in in ways that complied with the policy. But shifting it enough so that there were not lingering questions about whether or not their activities were in compliance with the policy. So they ultimately, having initiated the committee just a year or so earlier, felt strongly that they needed to keep the acronym, but make shifts in the purpose of the committee, the practices, and the activities that it was undertaking. Those things are kind of solidified, I guess, by their adjustments to the words that are used for the D and the E term in that committee name.
When would you like for us to ask questions? Do you want us to hold to the end, or if we're discussing something, do you want us to mention all that time, or what's the?
Let's do this. Unless you've got, there's like sort of one quick right there, you need a clarification, let's do that. Otherwise, let's hold it to the end because we may cover it. We still got a lot of.
Sure. And really, the only reason is because it's talking about the J-School, and that encompasses a whole list of issues. So we get delay and cover that at the end or cover it now, whichever you prefer.
I have some further detail that I can share relative to Journalism School, and I can do it now or later. I can't promise I can answer all of your questions, but I've tried to anticipate as many as folks as I could. And if not, we can go find answers for other things.
Let's go ahead and you finish. Let's finish the presentation, if that's okay with you, trustee. And we'll come back and we'll get all your questions answered.
All right. So the last little bit that I'll mention about Hussman specifically, under the revised mission and charge for this committee, they collaborate with faculty, staff, and student organizations to enhance the educational experience for all students and to ensure that students have access to opportunities for engagement and development. This Abide Committee also manages and leads Employee Wellness, Engagement, Recognition, and Professional Development initiatives for the school. So we'll come back, I guess, to more questions on that topic a little bit later. Another high point within the School of Law, there was a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. This committee was transitioned to be the Committee on Community, and it was recharged to develop initiatives that enhance the sense of inclusion and community belonging, as well as the overall wellness and mental health of students, faculty, and staff. The School of Law also had a Director of Diversity Initiatives whose activities were realigned to ensure compliance with the policy. The Eschman School of Pharmacy eliminated its Office of Organizational Diversity and Inclusion. The School of Information and Library Sciences had an IDEA Committee. I actually don't know what that acronym stands for off the top of my head. But they asked the committee to revamp its own charge in compliance with the policy. They wanted to ensure that it aligned with the mission of intellectual freedom, equal access to information, and combating misinformation and disinformation. So that will be the future charge of that. The School of Education's Ad-Hoc Committee for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging was discontinued. And there are other details of things undertaken at various schools within our 2024 certification. Those were kind of the highest offline ones that I thought would be worthy of mentioning in this discussion. And then one other detail about the work that Leah and I undertook over many, many hours last year up through this year, this has been sort of an ongoing thing as people continue to understand what the policy required, think about the ways that things were happening, and just kind of adjust their mindset, I would say, a little bit. They would come to us regularly and say, what about this? What do you think? Does this work? Does this not work? Do we need to tweak it? Is it fine? Do we need to change the whole thing? And so we've had a lot of conversations along those lines. But one really excellent source of assistance for us was the Communications Group across the entire campus. We enlisted that group with the assistance of Tony Moore to look at all of the public-facing materials as well as the internal facing materials and see where it looked like there might be concerns. And then the conversations we would have with folks is we need to know what it says about what they're doing. We need to know what they're actually doing. We need to make sure those things match, and we need to make sure all of those things are in line with the policy. So I say that relatively quickly because that is a speech and sort of a mantra that I have repeated thousands of times perhaps over the last twelve to sixteen months. And I think we've had a lot of success. I can't promise that we have caught every single thing. But we've certainly, it is an effort that folks very much undertook seriously and endeavored in all respects to be compliant, and understood what it meant to be compliant also.
Kirsten, thank you. Trustee Codis, this might be the most appropriate time to now follow up before we change presenter.
Let me start by saying this is a percolating lift. Y'all have done a ton of work on this, and I appreciate your efforts. The legal landscape and regulatory landscape have changed significantly. This board was on the cutting edge of that. You know, we talk about, I guess, the three main buckets, equal opportunity, nondiscrimination, as one, free speech is another, and hostile education environment. We took action well before it was popular. I remember a motion I had involved 2021 failed that would have addressed a lot of this. But SFFA, I think, set the standard for us, and now we are in a post-SFFA world. And we also have an administration that's very active in ensuring compliance with the legal requirements. So to that end, going back to the Journalism School, it has been kind of a poster child on a lot of this, going back to really, I think, accreditation-driven DEI standards that were part of its accreditation, and I want to say 2019, 2020, and then they were asked to comply. And it mandated certain requirements or talked about certain requirements that effectively involved unofficial quotas, hiring practices, admissions. And the school, in various reporting afterwards, if you look at their accreditation self-reporting, it outlines how they will do certain things to be more inclusive, but that also can be viewed through today's lens as discriminatory, I think, in a post-SFFA world. You have programs like the VITAI program that was utilized to recruit folks and effectively pay for them for different programs if they were historically underutilized or underserved communities. About a hundred grand a year. That was something that's happened in a variety of schools. And then again, kind of outlining this, if the accreditor of the Journalism School and these other schools are requiring this, and my understanding is these accreditations are voluntary. So if a school is part of an accreditation that is voluntary and it violates state law requirements, I don't see that as a policy out that we can just avoid. I think that you can choose not to be part of a group that violates state or federal law. So if you can maybe speak to what y'all have looked into in terms of what Hussman identified as their plan, what they self-identified in their accreditation, and then how that has changed and how that will work with their accreditor. And would they then opt out of that accreditation if it's a violation of state law to comply with that accreditor?
So I'm not going to be able to answer specifically relative to Hussman right in this very moment, but I can answer you relative to a similar conversation that has been had with a number of other schools relative to the accreditation requirement, because Hussman was not alone in their accreditation body requiring something that two, three years ago would not have, you know, caused a blink of an eye in many places perhaps. But certainly now doesn't line up at all or well or nicely with our institutional policies, or certainly more recently than the executive orders we've received. So what I am seeing, well, first of all, the way we have attacked this is we have looked with the school very specifically at what the accreditation standard is. My experience is that sometimes folks were reading into accreditation standards, things that were not necessarily there in a very, you know, well-meaning way. But I wanted to make sure that we very clearly and carefully understood together what exactly was required under the accreditation standard. Now, the message from our group has not been that we have the ability to violate either our state law or university policy in favor of adhering to an accreditation standard. So what we have done where there did seem to be a conflict was we said our institutional policy allows X, Y, and Z, or prohibits whatever, whatever. We put in what we could about what we were able to do. It sometimes was unsatisfactory to the accreditation body, but that was as much as we could do. So so at least from the conversations that I have been part of relative to how to line up those two things, our legal obligations and our university policy compliance obligations were first ahead of accreditation standards, and we just tried to build them in. What I am seeing is that the accreditation bodies are making adjustments, and I can say just this last week, Dentistry, who I work with an awful lot, has had a very challenging accreditation standard that we've had to do that kind of maneuvering to fit what we are able to do into the standard. And I would say for some schools, maybe all accreditation is quite important for what they do once their students graduate. Maybe all it is. I don't know.
And legal is another one that's reverting their standards now as well.
They are. They're all kind of going in that direction is what I have noticed. And so we have tried to, you know, here is the most that we can do and be in compliance with the law in our university policies. Take it for what it is. And if the accreditation body says no, then that's kind of what we have to live with.
It seemed like the red flags were social work, education, and journalism.
So social work, I haven't, I cannot talk with you about education or Hussman beyond what I have done. But social work, we did really dig in deep with them in particular because I agree that they are in, because of the work that they do, that is a particularly difficult area. I don't know off the top of my head what their accreditation standard is or what they were trying to fit it into. But the conversations that we had, we flagged their Cultural Humility Committee because that is a committee that sounded to me like if I were just looking at it, wait a second, this feels like this might be something that is potentially problematic.
Social work, it was requiring anti-racist, equity-driven curriculum.
So I am not, I am I cannot answer that specific question right now. I'm happy to go back to them and ask if that type of curriculum is still happening. I think there may have been a conversation around, and David can maybe help me if I'm struggling here. There was one particular class where I think that question may have been raised within School of Social Work.
Yeah, I think this ties back to their waiver request.
Okay. I wasn't looking at those, so I can't talk about that. I can talk about this cultural humility.
Look at the waiver request for each school, because that's self-identified areas where they feel like they might conflict.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just pause right there. I have lots I can talk about about that Cultural Humility Committee within social work, but I would say that the overarching blend of accreditation versus legal and policy-based compliance, as we have said, you got to comply with the laws and the policies that apply to us. Let's find a way to work in what we can and are able to do with what the standard asks, and we'll do our best. And the bodies have been responsive to that so far, as I haven't spoken with every school, but the ones I've connected with.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kirsten.
Sure.
Katie?
Hi. Good morning. I'm Katie Nolan, Office of University Counsel. And thank you for the opportunity to share the hard work we've done on this campus. I'm here to provide you with an overview of what we did to prepare for this year's certification. I believe you all have conceived draft. Before I go into it, I'm going to hand it over to David Lambeth to talk about the scope of the certification for this year.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. And this is really about the origin of this subcommittee in particular. So this subcommittee is charged with assisting the Chancellor. So this subcommittee is charged with assisting the chancellor with the ongoing efforts, as you've already heard a lot of today, to monitor compliance with the um UNC Systems Equality Policy. It is a, it's a creation um born out of the Board of Governors memo on June seventeenth. And that required that its subcommittee be appointed and that it receive briefings on institutional efforts around campus operations and realigned offices, institutional webpages and mission statements, and as necessary, limited closed-session briefings on personnel performance. The subcommittee, of course, is also charged with reviewing the institution's draft of quality policy certification in consultation with the chancellor, and that is due, as we all know, on September first. Um, and, and it's just important to note that this is a very important advisory function. And, and you'll see there's nothing on the agenda that requires any items for action. Um, rather, it's, it's to for the university to explain, for the administration to explain the efforts that have um been undertaken and, and to, of course, um, hear from the subcommittee, ask any suggestions about, about um further efforts that are needed.
Thanks, David. So this process, as you heard, um of the, the bulk of the action uh on this campus to comply with the equality policy occurred and was described in the twenty twenty-four certification um and was thoroughly covered by Leah and Kirsten. Um, so this year's process was largely checking in to see how we followed through with what we reported in the twenty twenty-four certification. Um, and to be responsive to the topics raised in that June um seventeenth memo that David mentioned. Um. So y'all have been provided a copy of the draft certification. I'm prepa- prepared to walk you through all of the details in the draft um and answer any questions you have about it. So first is an update to the twenty twenty-four certification um highlighted on page fifteen. I want to point out that we identified an additional forty-one positions that we abolished. Um, all of them were vacant. Uh, but they just were not reported in the twenty twenty-four certification. Most of those were the diversity liaisons in the college and the School of Medicine um that Kirsten um and Leah talked about. Um, the twenty twenty-four certification acknowledged the sunset of these programs and accounted for the redirected savings tied to those programs. But it did not mention the uh them in the abolished position. So that's one update we included. Um, the breakdown of those abolished positions were thirty-five assistants. Most of them, as Kirsten noted, are secondary positions. So thirty-five were assistant department chairs in the college, three diversity liaisons in the School of Medicine. Um, and then three administrative roles that were, that had a variety of administrative functions, but had a ten percent or less designated um portion of their job assigned to, to DEI work, two from the Friday Center and one from School of Medicine. Um, second, I'm going to go through the twenty-seven realigned roles. Um, Kirsten and Leah spoke um a bit about how the university identified and realigned those roles for the twenty twenty-four certification. Um, my role here was to follow up to see the current status of these positions and see if there were any adjustments and review performance information for the individuals in those roles. Um. So first I pulled and reviewed all the position descriptions and updated the chart that was provided in the twenty twenty-four certification. You can see the updated chart starting on page two of the twenty twenty-five draft certification. Um, in the event that we found any issues with the position description of, of any of those roles, we approached the unit um to determine the scope of work of the employee to request and receive corrections to the position description to accurately reflect the role. And we requested and received written certification that the individuals in these positions were not performing work that would violate the equality policy. We also pulled performance reviews for the last two performance cycles, including performance goals, and now we'll provide more details about those in closed session. Of note, five of these positions are currently vacant. So I am prepared to walk through the descriptions of each realigned role, or I can answer specific questions that you have. Um.
Is that a question or a motion?
Well, I should just make sure that I allow other people to ask questions too. Um, I know in the materials that we have, the chart that kind of shows the um financial impact of last year's decisions, uh turning back to the five point four million, can you provide more detail? How that number was reached or what's that? Right stuff.
I can
Kirsten has more details about the financials.
At the, at the time we are doing
And also methodology behind it, because it seems like when we look, let's say down at NCG, they may have taken a different methodology than Chapel Hill in terms of determining savings. Um, so if we've put something in a different category, I would imagine we're counting as redirected savings where they might not have counted that as redirected savings if they're only showing eight thousand. If they realigned um um six positions. That'd be really good value for those people. That's, I mean, thousand dollars and change per person. So just the methodology behind it and then what those numbers, the five point three kind of fits to.
Um, I would, I would actually refer you largely back to the twenty twenty-four certification and the chart because um each school or unit identified what its number was, and they were largely left to themselves to identify people doing work that was potentially included in this set of things that would either need to be eliminated or redirected. And, and so it, it was really driven, yeah.
Is it um administrative positions? Is it outside programming? Is it contracting? What, what is, is that, is it all salaries or is it like services with a training group outside? What's the?
I would say it's ninety-eight percent salaries. There, there was some program, maybe a little bit less, was primarily salaries stipends for secondary appointments. Um, there were some programs, the things that I read through, um and there, there's more detail about them in the um twenty twenty-four certification. There were some program, program savings, but it was largely salaries.
When you say secondary appointments, that's someone in a current role, role, let's say as a professor. And then they're taking on this other role and they're getting additional stipend or for that particular role.
Right.
And is there a, is there a chart that kind of shows how that, how do you, like, how did you calculate five point four? Is there something that kind of fits to that that we could see here?
Well, the, the twenty twenty-four certification, I don't know if I have a, seen out of it with me.
Starts on page fifteen on, I've got it right here.
It, it, it breaks it down by school or unit. And they identified each of the positions that would be impacted. And they identified the savings that would come from those positions plus any programming that needed to change. So we just added up all of the, thank you very much. Individual areas where they were reporting to us that a savings or a redirection would be realized based on the changes they were making.
Yeah, I saw this and it gives me an overall, but this is kind of a self-reported number, right? So like King and Flagler, seventy-five thousand, five hundred. And then it goes from operating budget to now funds being directed to the Office of Talent and Administration. Doesn't really tell me a whole lot from that.
What we did this year kind of responsive to that is where there were the most significant expenditures that were self-reported. Our group, looking at things this year, went back to the schools and said, you know, at the time we were doing the twenty twenty-four, you knew you had to eliminate things. You didn't necessarily know what you were going to be doing with those funds. Would they be redirected? Where would they go? What would you do? Were there any changes made? And so for the, I don't have them for all of these. But for um example, School of Medicine, which identified approximately two point four million that would be part of its overall savings, I, I rechecked with them and said, is this still the number? Is it any different? Did it go in the places that you expected? And their answer was yes, those were all decisions that we made at that time and that is consistent.
We, once you just, uh, you check back in with them and ask them. I'm assuming that is still self-reported, so it's not an independent audit of their
Correct.
finances to see if that's where they spent the money or where it's been. We didn't on all of this, for both years, we did not do independent audit, or we didn't have our Dean Weber didn't go in and do an audit of these types of things. This is all self-reported.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's, if we're getting to the there's an item D on section four, the, of the report, the twenty twenty-five report, when we get to recommended actions, independent audit verification would be an important step.
So glad you raised that. And you will hear as I close out the open session that Dean Weber has agreed to include this as a module on every single one of his internal audits going forward.
Uh, this has been Abe. Uh Marty, uh, I had asked Dean the, the same question earlier as well before this committee was stood up, and I think I'd asked uh Chris McClure as well. So he was aware of it and, and with the new process where a standalone committee had to be formed for this and it couldn't just be rolled into audit. We needed to do this and, and Paul, thank you for uh bringing that up. Um, we'll, we'll definitely do that too.
So did, um, for the twenty-seven realigned roles, um, I can sort of walk through a summary or um I don't know if you had, I know that Leah and Kirsten discussed a little bit in detail. Um, did you have questions about any of those roles specifically, or would you like for me to walk through them?
Well, I think if we get into specifics of that, that is appropriate for closed session, right? I think if it can be linked back to a particular person, that's what we're supposed to cover.
I think if we're talking about like the role of the, the position description and the role that can be an open, if we're talking about performance, that would have to be in close.
I know there was an exception for federally or state-required positions. Do we have a list of those? So I, I guess what I'd be looking for is whenever we have in this policy an exception, say if you get a policy waiver, or if this is required, or if it's a federal or state requirement, having a conference of a list of those so that we know exactly what those are. So kind of like a uh exceptions list, if you're providing documents in a lawsuit and you're not providing certain things, you're going to say, hey, we didn't provide these things. So where aren't we complying with this? And what's the reasoning for it?
Yeah. I can look into that. I'm not aware of any positions that we have currently that conflict with the equality policy. So there are no exceptions.
Yeah, the policy, but the policy specifically allows for federal or state-required offices, like an example might be the historically underutilized business requirements. So I don't, I don't, given that in last month's meeting, we heard from um the chief architect about that. I think that's still being used. So I would imagine that's one that's an exception. And that probably, you know, we should be, that gets into that bucket of contracting. You talk about hiring, admissions and contracting. You know, where are we contracting, where we're doing certain things? Another one that I think we should probably audit back in is um search committees. If we're using an outside search firm, more than likely, if they're doing Zoom meetings, they're running no-taking or something like that. So getting that and running that back through just to check and make sure those actual searches are in compliance might be another way to um trust but verify the compliance.
Gotcha. So I'm going to summarize that by saying we are going to look at the ex, the universe of exceptions under the law, which by definition means they're compliant, they're not non-compliant, because they're exceptions for a reason. But we ought to have an eye on that and a keen focus on that to make sure we're not drifting. So we will get that done for you.
And be able to react quickly if there are changes that come down from DOE or the state regarding those sorts of things.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, now I can um describe the, the memo, asked us to review student affairs positions. Um, and I can describe what the process that I went through. Um, this is covered on page twenty-eight of the draft certification. Um, so we reviewed six hundred and fifty positions, all that had a student affairs job code across the university. Um, that includes central student affairs operations as well as um what's coded as student affairs positions in the individual schools and administrative units. Um. So we reviewed the position descriptions. We ended up flagging twenty-one positions that had um language that we wanted to look further into. Um, or outdated language. It looked like perhaps they had not updated the position description accordingly. So for those twenty-one positions, we approached the unit um to determine the scope of the work. Um, to determine whether, whether this was just an administrative error, that they just didn't update the position description or understand what kind of work they were doing. Um, in those situations, um, it was identified that it was administrative error. Um, so we requested um also the performance information, including performance goals to con- confirm the scope of the work to double-check. Um, we requested and received corrections to the position descriptions to accurately reflect the role. Um, and then we recr- requested and received certification that the individuals in these positions were not performing work that would violate the equality policy. Um. So through these exercises, we also just decided to run a report in our human resources management system, searching all active positions for any leftover positions that had principal functions just assigned to DEI work. Um, this is described on page twenty-nine of the draft certification. So through that, running that report, we identified sixty-nine positions out of nineteen thousand, seventy-five positions um that still had a principal function, some percentage assigned to DEI. Um, of these sixty-nine positions, thirty-six were vacant. Most of them were these diversity liaisons that we ended up abolishing um of the vacant positions. Um, thirty-three were filled. Um, so what we did similarly to what we did with the student affairs positions, we approached the unit. Um, and in most cases, what we found is that they had updated the position description, but not updated the, the individual um percentages assigned to the role, which every position description has. It has a general description and then like fifteen percent assigned to this, ten percent to this. Um, and that they, they had, that was an oversight. Um, to double-check, we reviewed the performance information of all tho- of those positions flagged, including what their goals were, to make sure that their performance goals weren't tied um to anything that would violate the policy. Um, we worked with the units to determine the scope of the work. We requested and received written certification that they were not performing work that would violate the equality policy. Uh, we required the units to either abolish the position or update it accordingly. Um, and we had a hundred percent compliance on that request. Um, thirty-four were abolished. Um, and then we inactivated the DEI function as a selection um in our system as an option for the position descriptions.
Okay.
Um. So another item, the June seventeenth memo asked us to cover is how we educated the campus. Um, so we collected and described that information on pages fifteen through eighteen of the certification draft. Um, Kirsten and Leah already provided a thorough overview of actions taken from central administration. Um, the report provides more, more detail about what each school or unit did. Um, and I'm prepared to walk you through those details. Um, jump in if you have specific questions. Um. So as I said, the first eleven bullets on that list reiterate what Leah and Kirsten covered about how the provost's office was support from OUC and communications educated and worked with individual schools and units to make necessary changes. Um, in addition to their efforts, the university updated all trainings to comport with the policy, including the mandatory training for search committee members. In terms of what each school did or unit did, um basically all units um including student affairs, human resources, the compliance office, um describe assembling their leadership teams, reviewing the policy um and its requirements in detail and requiring their leaders to work and requiring their leaders to work with their units and employees to understand and implement the policy in their respective areas. Many units described holding all staff or faculty meetings to go over the requirements of the policy, often holding Q and A's and inviting one-on-one meetings when needed. This included, for example, the Office of Enrollment, um, Innovation and Public Health. Um, other units included more details, um, detailed actions such as, um, enrollment actually asked each employee to acknowledge in writing their understanding of the policy. Uh, the college held a series of meetings and workshops and met individually um, with people who had engaged in DEI efforts in the past, um, to go over the expectations, as did the School of Medicine. The School of Social Work distributed a copy of the policy to the entire school community, held a series of lunch and learn sessions about the policy. Um, and the many units described initiating comprehensive policy and program reviews and ensuring their hiring practices reflect the requirements of the policy. Um, in summary, there was a lot of time and effort put into educating our campus about the equality policy. We know that the work isn't complete and we are looking at different ways to educate our campus, um, and those, um, Paul will mention some of those i- ideas moving forward of what, of what we have, what we'd like to do. Of course, we'd like to hear any of your recommendations or thoughts, but any questions about that portion? Okay. Um, so we were also asked to describe how we updated our webpages, mission statements for programs, curriculum and objectives. Um, we collected that information and described them on page eighteen to twenty eight of the draft twenty twenty five certification. Um, Kirsten and Leah provided a summary of actions and directives from central administration. Um, but I can go into more detail. Uh, we've put significant effort into ensuring our communications and programs reflect our commitment to institutional neutrality, equality and compliance with the law and UNC policy. Um, just want to acknowledge that due to the decentralized nature of our operations, specifically our webpages, the sheer number of webpages managed by the university, this effort is ongoing and we can't claim to be perfect. We're finding stuff every day, corrections every day. Um, while we have been very proactive, one thing to highlight is how responsive we've been when someone raises a concern. Um, specifically at any, we've received some external concerns. Um, we've received a number of communications from external parties expressing concerns about content and programming reflected on our webpages. In all instances, we've thoroughly investigated the raised concern and adjusted the content when appropriate. Um, for example, we received concerns about a few of our webpages linking to third-party scholarships that prioritize or make selections based on protected characteristic. So we researched, um, every single opportunity scholarship listed, um, across three different unit webpages, um, which was hundreds and hundreds of scholars, external scholarships. Um, and adjusted the webpages for three different units to remove references and links to scholarships that make selections based on protected characteristics. So there's ten pages in that report of, um, describing how, breaking down by unit, um, how, what changes they made to their webpages and communications. Um, I can walk through each one in detail. Or I can answer questions that you have. Um, I can start describing it and jump in if you have questions.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
Any else has a question they can ask? Otherwise I'll ask one. Yeah, go ahead.
So on that, uh, website review, I'm assuming we're effectively hosting all of that internally or we're, we're in charge of the content if it's, you know, dot UNC, EDU. Um, you would think you could take, uh, AI to kind of go back through or view the internal files for that to make the process a lot easier. Is that something they'll did or is, if not, that may be something that we want to look at doing is that plus being in similar fashion. I know there are certain proprietary data that we don't want out there. The, um, syllabi, but those could also perhaps be brought into an internal database and reviewed to make sure that we're not violating the, um, there's of course academic freedom, but it's subject to applicable laws and part of that is making sure that there's no required perspectives. And so the only way you're going to get that is, I don't think it's going to be from a course description or a small summary. It's going to be the reading list. The kind of grading for that, um, to analyze that. And that's a big data lift, which would probably seem to fit well for AI. Um, assuming that we can protect the intellectual property of the professors, of course.
Good idea. I, each unit manages their own webpages and I'm, and I, this came from a directive. We, they put a lot of work and central communications met with all the communicators and really outlined expectations um, around complying with the policy, but it was really left to the individual units, um, to do that work. And so some may have used AI. I can't speak to what they all did, um, but I think that's an excellent idea.
So websites, again, that wasn't validated by someone else that was internally reported. We asked them to look at their websites and they came back with their own self-grading of sorts on it.
Correct.
Okay.
But I'll give you.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Paul.
Just real.
Unless there was maybe a complaint that was filed and then there might have been an investigation.
We, we have, um, invited third parties that think they identify something on one of our websites that might be non-compliant to shoot an email to us. That happened. I got an email saying you can't host third-party scholarships that violate um, equality policy. And it's, you know, sort of under the umbrella of you can't do indirectly what you can't do directly. And so we took a look at that. We scrubbed the websites of those third-party violated, violative, third-party, uh, scholarship. So we invite that. We're, we're, we're happy for prompts from any source. We know we carry the burden of doing it internally. But we've had, uh, you know, good, good prompts from third parties just volunteering to send us ideas.
And do we have a catalog of those things that were removed or violated the policy?
Um, I think we've taken note. I don't know if we have like archived that information that was removed.
And then I don't know if it's going to be open or closed. I assume open donor policy and kind of uh, restricted, um, giving, kind of how we're going to tackle that. Is that something that we're going to cover today as well?
Well, I'll chime in on that one. I mean, we, we covered that for the we've covered that essentially in the last BOT meeting and we've, we are not going to sleep on that issue. We're going to continue to clean that up over time. Yes.
Yeah. So we're going to make sure that our donor policies comply with the.
Yep.
Yeah. And just to add to that, we did receive information from development that they have frozen all funds supporting DEI until further. That, that is what they reported into us. They've deactivated several funds, um, and frozen funds that supported DEI efforts across the campus.
Yeah, I think that would be a priority then for them to kind of figure that out so they can start redeploying those. And that's where, you know, I don't want to cross over anything, but the, the laws, we understand there are certain things that BOT can approve changes for, and then there are certain things the courts would need to approve changes for for donor intent if it's not in compliance or.
We, we, I think we've refined that process that I think you'll be happy with.
All right.
Unless it was required to come to you, which is very unusual, we can handle it outside of, of your workload.
Well, is there any further questions about the web content? Um, I'm going to hand it over, um, to Paul and Provost Jim Dean, um, for final remarks before we go into closed session.
One, one more question.
Oh, sure.
Kind of related to that on web content. Sometimes when we're doing searches, we are advertising in certain periodicals or on certain websites. Have we reviewed that to see that we're not targeting only or restricting our population of potential applicants?
I can look into what that policy is in the, in the recruitment unit and get back to you.
So, um, my part in this is relatively small. Um, I think the experts have really talked about all the great work that's been done over the past several years, and I just want to publicly thank you for all the work that you've done, uh, exhaustive and exhausting. So thank you for that. Um, this work is, is never finished. We're continuing the work. As you can see from the conversations today, occasionally issues come up and are brought to our attention. Uh, we look at each issue carefully and we'll continue to make adjustments, uh, to ensure that we're in compliance. It's not a one-shot kind of thing. It's a continuing effort to make sure that, uh, that we're in compliance with the policy. So again, thank you for all the work that you've done. And with that, I'll turn it back to Paul.
Thanks, thanks. Jim, uh, just to put a bow on what Jim just said. We know we're not at the finish line. We probably never will be at the finish line, but I don't want there to be any question about our commitment to, to get there. Uh, so we are going to continue working. And some of the ways we're going to continue working would be, first of all, as we mentioned earlier, uh, our chief audit officer is going to include within the scope of every internal audit equality policy and compliance therewith. So that will be a matter of routine, uh, so that, that will help us get better and better. Uh, the chancellor is going to discuss the equality policy at his quarterly meetings with campus leaders and instruct them to ensure that their units understand the policy's requirements. The university will be incorporating information about the equality policy into regular training and communications about our discrimination and harassment policy. And the Office of Human Resources will work with HR officers to ensure they understand how to implement the policy requirements in hiring processes and employee job descriptions. Now, what we'd like to do is conclude with a very brief closed session, uh, to cover, uh, private information and privileged information.
Before we do that, can we, because I want to make sure everything that is open session before we go on close session. Um, admissions and how we're verifying kind of compliance both with SFFA and non-discrimination standards. Um, I would assume, again, that's right now self-reporting. I know there was some mention of meeting with some of the, um, or training, some of the, um, admissions reviewers. Um, but have we gone back in and kind of looked to confirm that any particular ideology is not being used as a guideline for, um, whether someone gets a A or B or C on admissions?
I'm not aware, um, of anything. That's not to say there isn't some sort of internal control that's been put in place, but we can find out that information and get back to you.
We'll follow up.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just, just to, to wrap everything up, uh, Paul, thank you. And, and as you mentioned, you know, a lot of this, um, Marty, as you brought up, is self-reported and the fact that now it's going to be part of, of, of Dean Weber's, uh, audit process as well. At the end of the day, you know, chancellor and this subcommittee is, is, and the chancellor and the provost are signing off on this. So we just need to be sure that um, uh, one, we're not just aware, but we're taking action. So uh, having heard everything I've heard today, just, it seems like we're, we're in the right direction and and having an, uh, our independent audit, having the auditor look at it on, on top of the self-reporting that happens is only going to make us better. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, that concludes our open session items and I will now entertain the motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Equality Policy Certification Subcommittee convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, section one, four, three, dash, three, one, eight, dot, eleven, A, one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information and also pursuant to section one, four, three, dash, three, one, eight, dot, eleven, A, three, and A, six.
You've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee, uh, Jones. Any discussion or debate? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Uh, we are now in closed session. I'll now recognize, uh, Chancellor Roberts and Vice Chancellor and General Counsel.
Just a second.
Oh, we gotta close things out. I forgot.
It's hard. One more second.
Yep.
Trustee Patel, we're good. We're back in open session.
Thank you, sir. Um, if there are no further items for the subcommittee's consideration, we will now adjourn without objection. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, have a great, uh, week.
Thank you. Thank you.